Okay, great. I'm going to ask President Eller to unmute herself.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, August 17th. May I ask that we repeat the pledge as Ms. Schoenfeld holds our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains School District, I don't have it in front of me, is to, to somehow support all of our students, cherish their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, Dr. Rika, we will have a moment of silence.
Thank you, President Eller. I would like to ask everyone to join us in a moment of silent reflection as we remember Anna Bergio, a retired food service employee on staff from 1980 to 2003. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rika. Dr. Rick, at this point, I would ask, if you don't mind, for you to do your report. And if you don't mind, we will have our, any board announcements or comments right after, followed by our public participation.
Thank you, President Eller. Good evening, everybody. And again, good evening to the many community members, faculty, staff members, students who are with us this evening virtually. Thank you for taking the time out to join us on a summer evening. We really do appreciate it and really do appreciate the fact that so many members of our community. Michelle, I told Russell, I just muted you. Thank you. So many members of our community have participated in having conversations and thinking about school in the White Plains City School District as we move toward reopening our facilities in the fall of 2020. It has been an extraordinary effort with many thousands of voices involved in the process. And this evening's Board of Education meeting, so well-attended, I think is representative of how important this topic is to all of our community members. So I want to just again echo the board sentiments and thank everybody for taking the time to be with us. In terms of summer of 2020, for the trustees, as you know, in addition to everything related to the pandemic, we've also had our normal operational responsibilities that have been taking place. So we're very happy to share that we've been moving forward with our facility work as planned from previous years, capital reserve applications. And Mr. Stefanelli and the team have been working diligently and all sorts of projects that had been previously approved and then approved by the State Education Department. So things are going very well in terms of our construction. Many of you have seen our new fields. You see all of the different stone work going on, roof work going on around the district, lots of work going on interiors as well. So just a thank you to Mr. Stefanelli and everybody in our operations department for all that hard work. Also administrators and faculty and staff members working together, not just on professional development opportunities. And I think Dr. Han shared a couple of weeks ago that since the spring, we've had somewhere above 500 professional development opportunities that have taken place throughout the district. So a lot of work going to support professional development, a lot of work in terms of focusing on education and instruction as we move into the fall of 2020. And we have more that we're going to continue to do. So we're looking, we're looking forward to that as well. In terms of strategic planning, Strategic Planning Committee was engaged in a remote process. But essentially, really what we did was we took the strategic plan from last year and we changed it to incorporate the needs related to COVID-19, remote learning, and making sure that we're attending to the social and emotional needs of our children as we move forward into the 2020, 2021 academic year for reasons that I don't need to explain to anybody. During the year last year, many of the measurement indicators that had been part of the traditional strategic plan were not, didn't take place. So as we move forward this year, the committee has put forward a plan that will allow us to continue to focus on those areas of academic achievement, of equity work, and of community connection as we, as we move into the next academic year as well. Hopefully, we'll be able to measure those progress indicators using more quantifiable measurements, but also at the same time, we do have our qualitative and anecdotal measurements that are taking place in the district, I believe, is continuing to make solid progress in all three of those areas. The Board of Education will be considering that draft strategic plan for approval in September, and all will be able to view that moving forward. I do want to thank our trustees who are part of that process for being part of that process again in, in the remote fashion and look forward to presenting that to, to the board in September. Professional development, as I mentioned, continues also with our administrators. Our retreats are coming up. We will be working hard to make sure that we're supporting everybody as we look forward to September and also allowing folks the opportunity to get into their buildings and plan as we move forward. There is a calendar change on the agenda this evening for everyone's information. Really what we're doing is we're asking the board to allow us to move the Superintendent's Conference Day that's scheduled in November on Election Day to Wednesday, September the 9th. That would make Wednesday, September the 9th, a Superintendent's Conference Day. And that would mean, according to the hybrid plan in our, in our district plan, that would mean that Election Day would be full remote learning day. And folks will remember that Election Day at issue schools would have been closed to children as it's the presidential general election. That's typically how we've approached that in the past. So that calendar change is on the agenda for consideration this evening. If approved, we will make sure that we let all of our parents and guardians and community members know of that change. And that would, of course, make the first day of school Thursday, September 10th, moving forward. We do have personnel items on the agenda this evening, including, and I'm very happy to, to announce, including our recommended candidate for principal of White Plains High School. I'll leave it to the agenda and to go there, but I would like to thank publicly all of the committee members and everybody who was involved in that process, that search process for principal of White Plains High School. It was a very competitive process. We appreciate certainly everybody who expressed interest in that. And we'd also like to thank and show our appreciation to all the committee members as it was a very detailed, in-depth process. And Mr. Pepper, I know you worked very hard with Dr. Manny Campbell on that as well. And we'd like to also extend thanks to you. So we're looking forward to that portion of the agenda this evening. Lots of challenges continue. And what I'll focus on right now for the board's consideration is where we are in terms of planning for the opening of school. As you know, we have been dealing with all the myriad challenges that are before us with regard to opening school facilities during COVID-19. Certainly, we're very fortunate in New York right now. While we, while we struggled in the past, we are fortunate right now that the numbers of COVID-19 continue to remain quite low in our region and in our state, and that's wonderful. We're really thrilled about that, of course. And everyone has sacrificed a great deal to make that happen. As school districts consider the reopening of facilities in the fall, all eyes are focused on health and safety. All eyes are focused on making sure that those numbers remain low so that we can re-enter our facilities and then continue to keep those numbers low and welcome more children back. The goal, of course, during this process is to keep all of our children safe, keep all of our community members safe, and to do so in a, in a way with really what is the best information that we have any given day. All of you know how quickly things change, how pronouncements are made, districts need to reconsider. Data is, is shared. Districts need to reconsider requirements related to health, safety guidelines from everything related to the physical plant, PPE, transportation, parent and guardian needs, student needs, faculty and staff needs, all of these things are very important in the process. And truly, what we've tried to do is really weigh every single opinion, every single recommendation, and give it its due reflective credence during, during our planning process. Our district-wide reopening committee has been working on this in earnest since May. We all knew that COVID-19 was not going to disappear necessarily through the summer. And we started talking about what school could potentially look like in May. The, the primary objective was to make sure that whatever we did, we kept our children safe in our community. So I'm really proud of that work. It's imperfect, for sure. Every member of the committee knows that. But I can tell you, having worked with these individuals now for months, every member of that committee is really committed to our children and to our community. So I'd like to thank all of, all of the committee members for that work. You're not done. This work continues. For sure, we're going to need to be nimble and flexible as we move forward. And we've told that to parents and guardians as well. Even though we have a very robust reopening page with tons of information that you can read, all of that information is subject to change at any given time, depending upon the landscape within which we find ourselves as it comes to COVID-19. And so we are really trying to put together a plan that is a conservative plan that will allow us to re-enter our facilities safely and for the long haul, right? We don't want to re-enter our facilities only to have to close down in 14 days. And we know that that's going to be tricky. We need only look outside the state borders. This is the reality. When you look, whether it's internationally or whether it's around the country, when you introduce more folks into a, a public setting, the chances of COVID-19 propping up are increased. And that's something everybody knows. We also know that our parents and guardians need a great deal of support. We've heard from moms and dads that are struggling to try and put a schedule together, that are struggling with childcare needs. We know all of these stressors exist in our community. So we also know how important it is that we put together a starting point where folks can now begin to plan. This evening, as, as we have been talking through with our reopening committee, and I've been talking through with colleagues in the region as well, I would like to put out for the board's consideration, and I'll ask Mr. Pepper to weigh in on this too, a small shift in how we've been thinking. Now, I, I know for, for some, you know, another shift is kind of thinking like, are you kidding? We're just starting to think about the reopening plan that was out a couple of weeks ago. But really what we're looking at right now is a shift related to concerns with regard to our employees. We are seeing right now a high number of employees who are uncertain as to whether or not they're going to be able to return to the facilities. And that is a concern for us. Because if employees aren't able to return to the facilities for a variety of reasons, we're not going to be able to offer the programming in a hybrid model that we would like to be able to offer. Now, I know that some folks are thinking about a hybrid model and they're saying, you know, the hybrid model is the least perfect of all the different models out there. And we might agree on that. Nevertheless, we also know that it's important to be able to welcome students back into our facilities in a safe manner. So the hybrid model is where we came out. What we're asking for, for some consideration on this evening is a so-called phased-in approach. And, and what we're looking at right now in terms of a phased-in approach is really simply this. It's really seven additional days. We, we, as I explained earlier this evening, talk, are going to talk on this agenda about a, a change to, to the calendar to make the 10th the first day. And really what we're asking the board to consider is a phased-in approach where the first day of hybrid learning becomes Monday, the 21st. What that will allow in those seven additional days, plus with the Superintendent's Conference Days, is it will allow us to re-enter our faculty and staff members, as well as some children, during the course of those seven days, to get everyone acclimated to the remote learning and the hybrid model. To think that we're going to be able to just flip a switch on the 10th and have everything up and running and ready to go, I don't think that that would be possible. And I think most folks understand that. If we can have the opportunity to bring faculty and staff in first, again, smaller debt, lower density at first, get everybody in, get the technology up to where we all know it would be, and then start bringing in our students at the same time to give them materials, to get them acclimated to how this is going to work, to get a sense of how the building layouts are going to be, what the expectations related to social distancing and, and safety procedures are going to be, and sort of lay that, lay that roadmap out in advance. We think that that will go a long way to helping ease us into a reopening of our facilities in a safe manner. We've had this conversation with our reopening committee. We've had this conversation with our district leadership committee. There is support from within both of those committees to explore this. And again, for our audience who's listening right now, not talking about phasing in and, you know, not, not moving to a hybrid model until October or November. We're really talking about seven additional days that we think will provide a good bridge for us to get a sense of our employees, as well as, again, getting the legs underneath us as we reopen the facilities moving forward. So that's where we're at right now, Madam President, and of course, happy to answer any questions that I'm able to answer from the Board of Education at this time.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Rika. At this time, board members, please provide your comments. Charlie, we can start with you.
Oh, wait. There we go. Am I unmuted?
Yes.
You're unmuted.
So in my 14th year on the board, I think this is maybe the second, the second time that I ever wrote down notes. I usually speak extemporaneously off the cuff, but I wanted to get some things out. And just give me a couple of minutes. So the other day I was walking in my neighborhood and I came across a family that I know fairly well, wonderful family, and their fourth grade daughter asked me a very interesting question. She said, "When you were a kid, how did they deal with this?" And my answer was, "We didn't. We've never had to." No Board of Ed member has had to, no superintendent, no administrators, no teachers. No one's ever had to deal with this before. We've had snow days and we've had maybe the occasional loss of power or something like that. I said, "This is unique, and we're trying to figure it out in the best way for everyone." Over the last few weeks, I've had conversations with families and stakeholders. I've been following the CDC and Johns Hopkins and the Mayo Clinic and have had deep conversations with the director of the Dixtean Cancer Center in White Plains. I've monitored what's happened in other schools and other states and countries. So I am aware that currently there's more than 2,000 kids in the country who are quarantined. My wife and I both had the virus in, back in March, and we came through okay and we feel all right. But we're trying to keep our 90, my 90-year-old mother and her 80-year-old mother healthy. I know that since New Year's Eve, at least 170,000 of our brothers and sisters who are here on New Year's Eve are dead. I know that one in five people who get the virus have some form of residual. Sometimes it's mild, and sometimes it means they're going to be long haulers with weeks, months, and years ahead of them. I know that the number of kids who are getting the virus is going up. And I know that under Governor Cuomo's leadership, we've crushed the curve and lowered the transmission rate, but the virus isn't gone. And what happens in other locales when prudence has been supplanted with expediency is instructive. I know that kids may be coerced into being vigilant in schools, but when they leave schools and gather with friends and family, who knows? I noted that if there's asbestos or, or God forbid, an active shooter in schools or some other dangerous condition, we would close the schools. We have an amazing staff, teaching and non-teaching. For 27 years, I've, I've volunteered in the school district, the last 14 on the Board of Ed. I've consistently been blown away by the, by these people and what they do for our kids. Since the pandemic kicked in, they've been working harder than ever. I want to make that claim because I've heard other people say that I'm a taxpayer and they're not working hard. They're working harder than ever. But the staff, by virtue of some people's age or conditions or their, or their family members, could be putting themselves and their lives on their wrist by walking into buildings. That's just fact. Now, I'm keenly aware of the hardships on families with working parents and childcare and concerns as to whether kids have the guidance at home and the necessary technology to thrive in a remote setting. But for many of us, including me, I'm, I'm working at home. I'm working remotely now. And so these were all considerations that, that have gone into my thoughts and my thinking that I don't want to put place unreasonable expectations on our staff, teaching and non-teaching, when we ourselves, like I'm working, I'm speaking to you from my home office now. So we need to consider all of these things. I know we all want our kids back in school. The staff loves being with kids. This is why they went into this profession. But we need to be smart and we need to follow what the science says. And that's, I'm done.
Rose, unmute yourself.
Any other comments from any board members? Short cane, unmute.
Thank you. I just prepared some remarks tonight because it's been on my mind a lot lately. I've, and I'm not going to tweet this out. I'll put this out tonight to everyone so you understand where, what my position is. So like many of us tonight, I'm approaching this decision with a heavy heart. So as an educator and a parent, I know the most important place for my children to learn and grow and laugh and pursue their dreams is in one of our White Plains classrooms, surrounded by dedicated teachers, administrators, and staff, and more importantly, their friends. However, I also do not wish in six to eight months to be sitting in a Zoom call or in person and having a moment of silence for a child or an employee that was put in a position to contract COVID-19 and die because we deemed it safe to return. I have reviewed the 80-plus-page plan. It is comprehensive. It is thorough. And it puts the health and safety of our staff and students first. But it is my position at this time, given what is happening nationally around the COVID spikes, as students return to universities, as families return from vacations, and as businesses resume pre-COVID normalcy, that I would prefer, at this point, to err on the side of caution and I support a fully remote start for the White Plains City School District. It will no doubt be a challenge, as Charlie said, for parents like my wife and I who are going to leave our three children to be at home to self-monitor and learn. I have every confidence in our teachers and administrators to provide a robust, accountable, and engaging remote learning experience. That will be a far cry from the crisis teaching that many of us experienced or did in the spring while dealing with the initial impact of a global pandemic. There's no doubt dark days are in terms of budget cuts and other uncertainties may lie ahead. But if for a moment we can ensure the smooth opening of a fully remote option, I believe that future generations of students and parents will look back on this moment and us and our decision during a global pandemic and know that we acted in the best interest of the children and the teachers of White Plains City School District and our community at large. So it is my position that I support a fully remote option. And maybe we can discuss what that would look like, perhaps a meet and greets for K through 8. We could work out the logistics, but I think no one more than myself wants to be back in front of a classroom, back in front of my students and doing what I love, and that's teaching. So that's just where my head's at, and I'm just curious to see where everybody else is. Thank you.
Thank you. Randy, did you, and then Cheryl? You're muted, Randy. You're still muted. Yeah, gotcha.
Though, one of the things that New York has done very well is to flatten the curve significantly. And in fact, New York has been opening up stage by stage since June, and we haven't seen an increase. The prevalence in New York of COVID-19 has remained under 1%. So that's incredible, and that's weird, having more people out and businesses opening. Nonetheless, I do understand the idea of starting with a remote opening, but I wouldn't recommend it being necessarily a remote opening for an entire marching period. I, I rather support a phasing in as, as Dr. Rika suggested. Certainly, it's called the novel virus because we don't know what it will do. So in general, I think because of our low prevalence and using masks, and I know that's hard to do, and following the hand washing and hand sanitizing, if we can do a short-term remote opening and phase in and then get our children in, I think that would be my preference. Certainly, there are things to change and they can. Certainly, when flu season starts, then, you know, we may have to change our thoughts. And this could change even a dime, actually. So that's all for me.
Thank you. Cheryl?
Good evening. I didn't prepare remarks, but I'm, I'm going to speak against the idea of a phased-in reopening. I understand the sentiment. I appreciate the sentiment. I also know how incredibly hard our school district has been working for these many months to prepare for the opening of school. I've sat in on the last few weeks of the reopening committee's, you know, meetings, been part of curriculum and instruction. And I feel that the district has really done everything within its power to mitigate the risks as much as it's possible to do. I think for the well-being of our students, getting them into a normal routine as quickly as possible is, is desirable. And if we're going to a hybrid model, you know, seven days later, I, I feel like we're kicking the can down the road. I feel that parents have been offered, you know, sort of the best of both worlds. Obviously, it's not best, but in the sense of if they want to send their kids to school, there is a hybrid model approach. If parents are not comfortable doing that, they have the option of the remote approach. I understand that we do have concerns, you know, regarding, you know, faculty and staff coming back. And, and that is obviously a major concern to all of us. I'm not clear that waiting, you know, seven school days is somehow going to change that picture or that anything is going to be different. And I would much rather see us moving ahead. We've done a lot of professional development, as you pointed out, Dr. Rika, over the summer. And I think our schools are going to be prepared for an opening, giving that extra, you know, Superintendent's Conference Day. It would be my preference to open as we've planned with a hybrid model. Thank you.
Okay. I have a couple of remarks as well, and I'll, I'll try not to, to repeat anything. So many of you have already heard me speak no fairly clearly where, where I would stand. So, you know, for all of us, health and safety of every person, every colleague in the district, in the school has to inform how we operate. This decision is not easy. We want all the very best for our children. I do believe that science will win, but until we get back to the education form that we once knew, we have to put health and safety first, period, end of sentence. In my opinion, our kids are used to superior education delivered by superior colleagues. That is what's going to keep our kids performing highly. Before our kids can feel safe, our staff must feel safe. Because when our staff feels safe, our kids can read those vibes. Our kids are very intuitive. And when our staff feels safe and relaxed, our students will perform. They will be better listeners. They will feel safe and relaxed. At a minimum, at a minimum, we should have a phased reopening. To me, that's at a, a minimum. And, and I'll be very honest that I thought up at least until the first quarter. Right? But at a minimum, a phased reopening gives us time to see how we do in our schools with staff, if we begin with staff, if they can get comfortable. Right? At a minimum, a phased reopening. What would happen if we opened too soon? What would be the impact of even one positive case in our community? I'm not willing to, to, to have that happen. And I know it might not be realistic, but I just don't want anyone to get sick. We've seen what it can do. We, we don't know this virus. We don't know everything about this virus. So a phased reopening gives us some time. A first-quarter remote really gives us time to see how things will play out. And I think that would be the safe way. We cannot guarantee 100% safety if we're on our hands and knees scrubbing that school every day because really that's what we're doing. Present, everything that we're doing is geared to make the school clean and safe, but we cannot give that 100% guarantee. None of this is easy. And in the end, as I said, one person getting sick is one too much. A phased approach at a minimum offers some measure of control, some little measure of being able to see how things play out, and, and more opportunity for colleague development in the meantime. Health and safety is primary. Science will win. We need our team. We need our teachers delivering masterful instruction. My risk benefit is really the risk of even one person getting impacted is one too much. Any more comments from the board?
I think Mr. Ricky and Ms. Loeb.
Yep, sure.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'll be brief, quite honestly. My comments mirror those of Charlie and Kane, yourselves, and Randy. There's no easy decision here. There's not a pandemic playbook that we're really working off of. Everybody is working very hard in trying to do the best we can under these situation and these scenarios that we're facing. But at the end of the day, when I sit here and I listen to you and I would listen to all of the information that we have, I think it really comes down to the safety of our students and our staff. And we want to make sure that we protect them as best we can. We know the finish line is close, or if we can believe that finish line is close for a vaccine. And quite honestly, I hope we get there soon, because then I think we will get there soon. But these are not easy decisions. I thank you for your time and your consideration, all the committee's hard work. And I think this is the right step that we have to take, and we reassess, and we move along, and we learn more as we move forward. And that's what this has been happening all along. We've been learning more. We know more now than we knew back in March, and we're going to know more next month than we know now. So again, thank you. I think, unfortunately, I think this is the right direction. I know it's not easy for parents, and I think giving people a chance to find out and to work, to make accommodations early are also helpful, too. We want to be considerate to our families. And this is difficult. It's a challenge with equity. It's making sure all of our students have that opportunity to learn. And I know, you don't make these decisions lightly, and we think of all of our students, and we want to make sure that they're all cared for educationally and physically. So that's really what I wanted to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Rose? Rose, are you on mute?
Sorry, I'm trying to unmute. My computer just froze. I also did not plan any remarks for tonight, but having listened to everyone else, I need to mirror everyone's opinions. When I first read the reopening plan, I also thought that the committee did an amazing job, and the work was far beyond impressive. And I was very much in support of a hybrid opening. But having thought about it and having listened to the concerns and the fears of the staff and the teachers, I have to agree that maybe hybrid will come down the road. I've returned to work very comfortably, but that's because that I know that I've done it safely and with restrictions. I'm also alone and see very few people. When you're talking about the situation of having a classroom full of students or a building full of students and staff, it takes a lot more for everyone to feel comfortable. I'm not so sure. I believe that seven days will make that much of a difference. I definitely feel a slow return is the way to go. But I'd also like to stress that we need to be flexible and that at the end of the seven days, if we feel that we need to go another week or perhaps a month, or as Rosemary said, maybe not until Thanksgiving or the first quarter, we need to keep that flexibility in mind. And so for all those reasons, I agree that the way that we should return is not yet by hybrid, but by a slow return.
Thank you. Thank you, Rose. I think there are no other comments at this time. Next, we'll move on to public participation. If you're delivering comments within the public participation portion of our agenda, I'd ask that you state your name and your address. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please also keep the privacy of our students in mind, and feel free to contact the administration with matters of a more personal nature. Please now raise your hands, I guess, in the chat if you have comments you'd like to bring during our public participation portion of the agenda.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have two hands raised already, and I will call on them in the order that they're raised. First is President Karen McCormick Lyons.
Hi. So I appreciate the kind words and sentiments. My name is Karen McCormick Lyons. I am speaking as the president of the White Plains Teachers Association located at 500 North Street in White Plains. Thank you for the kind words and the consideration and care with which the board has discussed the concerns regarding safety, the safety of our staff. We only have one chance to do this, and we must get it right. A phased reopening is a step in the right direction, but we really need to be mindful of community spread and how folks coming back from vacation and staff re-entering buildings is going to impact that. Health and safety must be paramount. And while the association does not control the decision here, we do request that if we must return, should there be an outbreak, that that building is shut down for 14 days? Given what we know about testing and the turnaround time and the way that this virus spreads, I believe it is the responsibility of this community to ensure the safety and health of our staff and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lyons. The next hand that is up is President Adele Hirszenberg. Good evening, Mrs. Hirszenberg.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Good evening, board. I must echo what Carol Lyons just said. My name, pardon me, Adele Hirszenberg, Five Gilbert Place. I am here as CSCA president. And for most of you that are not aware, quarter of our membership have been in every day since the outbreak. Half of them return to work in June. And the sentiment is that they're very nervous to have a fully staffed and children in the building. Although we completely miss our children, and this is why we are here, we feel that at this time, a phased-in opening would secure a little more time for all, would make most members feel safe, the community at large safer for those with underlying conditions. And as Carol Lyons requested, if it's possible to do the 14-day closure of a building, because we need to get this right, and we really only have one way of getting it right, and that is to keep our children and all staff safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hirszenberg. Madam President, I don't have any additional hands that are raised. If there's anybody in the audience this evening who wishes to address the board, please raise your Zoom hand, and it will show up, and we'll be able to unmute you and have you contribute. Sorry, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. I was muted. Do we have any more comments? No? Okay. All right, we will move forward. We will move forward with our agenda items. We now have summary action items number four through number eight. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Are there any questions?
I have a question, but not about that. Can I? We'll just do this and then a quick question.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess I'm just asking, so since Dr. Rick had presented what the direction of the district had suggested in terms of the committee, and most of us just, I guess, felt about a reopening, is this something we want to leave tonight with? Is it something that we can put a date on, just to give? I know Jim had said it for peace of mind for parents, just to have an understanding. And I know we all have to process what everyone just said, too. But just where are we in terms of that?
Yeah, oh, sure. So if it pleases the board, what I'd like to be able to do is tomorrow to indicate to our community that we will move forward with a soft phase, and that will result, right now, will result in a remote learning environment beginning on Monday, the 21st. I know there was some conversation about the semester, but I would like to ask the board for the opportunity to take these next four weeks or so to be able to move forward, work with faculty and staff. As Kane had mentioned, I'm sorry, Dr. Lutze had mentioned, be able to bring children in, have the opportunity for children to be able to meet with their teachers and in a safe way as we move forward during that period of time, and be able to get the remote and hybrid technology up and running as well. So that's what my thinking right now, if that works for the employees. And certainly, if something comes up, the landscape changes. But we don't want anything additional to compound the complexity here. But we do have the ability then to make a move if we need to.
Right. So Joe, I think what you're saying, that within this phase, and there will still be flexibility, and, you know, health and safety will dictate how things proceed, is that?
Absolutely accurate. 100%.
Just to be clear, I mean, I'm not in consensus with the rest of the board on this, clearly, but I see that. I'm out consensus by the rest of the board. I would like us to start as planned with our hybrid model.
And my question is, if we're starting with a phased-in remote, so that first week, there would in fact be instruction. They would not be needing to make up days. There would be full remote learning. And then the hybrid model, should it begin, should things remain safe, should we not see any uptick or any reasons to remain remote, would begin on that 21st? Because there was a chat question about making up days, I saw.
Thank you, Randy.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Son. Yeah, absolutely correct. Those are instructional days. It's not going, it would not impact our children's calendar. We would be instructing. We would be ramping up, having, again, having the opportunity to have those building-level meetings and such, just providing that opportunity to everybody to get acclimated, get into the facility.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy.
Yeah. Oh, doctor. Anything else on that? I think we can move on to our individual action items?
There is, President Eller, I do see a hand. I know it's a little late. Is that okay?
That's fine.
This is Mr. Stanton. Mr. Stanton?
Thank you very much for recognizing me. And I want to thank Trustee Brady in particular for her support of standing with the hybrid model. I read the plan when it came out. I thought it was reasonable and achievable. I think it's much more conservative than our neighboring district, every one of which is planning significantly more time in classroom for the high school students. Since the plan was written, the science has not changed, the caseload has not changed, and I don't see any reason why the district should not go forward with it at this time. In fact, I watched the reopening committee meeting today. The only new information that I saw there was Ron Velez's report that the district's order of iPads is not going to be ready until the end of September, which I assume means that a large number of students who need technology help will not have access to it at the beginning of the transition plan. So I would urge the board to stick with your plan, and I think it's the right thing for the students, all of the students in the district.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your feedback.
Yeah, I'm sorry, President Eller. Thank you, Mr. Stanton. I just, for the benefit of folks who didn't get a chance to see, Mr. Stanton was referring to Mr. Velez's report related to the supply chain lag globally, unfortunately. But fortunately, this was not the first time we discussed this. This has been an ongoing issue, really, since we started ordering back in April. While we are anticipating a delay in the iPads for our 11th and 12th graders, the new iPads, we do have enough devices, just so everyone is aware, to be able to cover all of our children who would be in need of devices at the outset of the academic year. So thank you, Mr. Stanton, for calling attention to the supply chain. Just wanted to make sure everyone was clear.
Yes. And Dr. Rick, I do apologize. I know that there are some donations in our summary action items, and, you know, we've been very blessed with donations, you know, all the time. And I know you'd want to say something about those, and I apologize for not pulling that out.
No, absolutely. I absolutely do. But we also have another hand. Mrs. Brick? Good evening, Mrs. Brick. Please remember to give your address as well as your full name.
My physical address of where I live?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm Jennifer Brick. I live at Two Millford Close. I have a rising sixth grader and ninth grader. And while I did send a fairly lengthy email to all of you prior to this meeting, I just wanted to quickly reiterate that I am grateful that many of you have, in fact, decided to put safety first and put education first. As I reiterated in my letter, I think we really need to focus, obviously, on safety, and then the next priority has to be education. And I think when the teachers are very clearly coming back and saying that they need more time to make this work, then I think we have to listen to our educators. I think we have to put education first, and no one is saying that we need to do this indefinitely. I think we need to just give the teachers the time they need to provide quality education, as they always have. And as they, you know, I don't know any educator who got into this business because they didn't love educating, right? So at the end of the day, I think we need to focus on making sure that we're supporting our educators and giving them the tools they need to be able to focus and not be pulled in two different directions so that they can do the great job that they always do. I don't know. I can't be in two places at once. And so I don't know any teacher who could either and want that, you know, giving them the extra time to be able to adapt and to get used to this new environment. I am all for it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brick. Sorry, President Eller. Okay, I would very much like to thank all of our generous donors. If I could draw your attention to item C, which is a donation of disposable protective masks from the Wuxia Chinese School of Greater New York. Thank you very much. 5,000 disposable masks. We also, item D, a donation of 200 masks with clear panel fronts. Those are the masks that will allow our children to discern facial expressions and lip movement. Very important, particularly in certain classes, and particularly with our youngest tigers. Well, our older tigers, too, like to see smiles, so everybody. Donation as well, and item E for Mariner Avenue School. And we have here from the MASPTA, a donation of $32,173 used specifically for the installation of an outdoor learning space at MAS. Thank you very much to the MASPTA. We also have an item donation at MAS from the MASPTA, a donation, a total of $4,110 in gift cards to be used to assist families and students to purchase food during the COVID-19 pandemic. Item G, another generous donation from the David R. Holtis Memorial Fund, and recommended acceptance of $1,500 for the memorial fund. Thank you very much. Item H, a drum set, the acceptance of a drum set from Patty Pickett. Thank you, Patty, for the, to the songwriters club at White Plains High School. Item A, a donation for the Richard Leeson scholarship. The acceptance of $50 from Mr. David Rothenberg for the Richard Leeson Journalism Scholarship. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of our generous donors and all those who continue to give to benefit our children in the White Plains City School District. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Thank you. So next, we'll move on to our individual action items. The first one, 9A, is the amendment to the policy for non-represented employees. Yes, the recommended action is approval of this amendment to the policy for non-represented employees effective July 1, 2020. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have, we have item B. The authorization for the board president to execute amendments to employee agreements. So the agreement is noted in the backup. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have an administrative appointment. We are recommending the approval of the administrative appointment for Emily Martinez replacing Ellen Doherty as high school principal, the probationary period of September 21st, 2020, through September 20th, 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Questions?
Welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So next, I would ask Dr. Rick if you have any comments, and then to Mr. Martinez to also greet us.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, trustees, and certainly congratulations, Mr. Martinez. Again, I would like to start by thanking Mr. Pepper, Dr. Manny Campbell, and the search committee. Great job, very hard work, and really tremendous, tremendous effort there. I'd also, of course, like to thank the Doherty for her many years of dedicated service to the children of White Plains High School. And Mr. Martinez and I had a conversation just this afternoon, and we talked a bit about this transition to the role of White Plains High School and how exciting it is. And, you know, Emily comes to us with a great deal of experience, a lifelong learner, to be sure, looking at his educational record. I know right now he's in progress, working on his doctorate in Manhattanville, and has demonstrated his commitment to children over the years of his service, and not just children, but also elevating opportunity. And that was one of the characteristics that Mr. Martinez displayed during the interview process. The other piece is communication, making sure that he's getting out and connecting with every member of the educational community of White Plains High School. And I'll tell you, in conversations with Emily, I'm very excited. I did warn him, you know, it's prime time, it's White Plains High School, we have high expectations, but we also know that he's going to have the support of an outstanding faculty and staff, parent-guarding community, and not envision the fact that our high school students are simply the best. So, Mr. Martinez, congratulations. I'm going to unmute you or ask you to unmute yourself and see if you have any remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Rick, and thank you to the board for this great opportunity. I am deeply humbled and yet excited for this opportunity. Clearly, this is probably one of the toughest times to come into a school, a brand-new, and such a challenging fall, but I can assure you that I just cannot wait to start meeting our Tigers and being involved and see kids in the halls. So I will definitely look forward to, you know, getting to know our staff and our families. One of my strengths, and I'm proud to always say, is that I am about relationships. So that is my goal, is to build those relationships with all our stakeholders, all our students. And just to be here for all our staff, and today, just hearing the passion and the thoughtfulness of the board just really speaks to what drew me to White Plains. And so again, thank you for the opportunity, and I just can't wait to get started.
Dr. Rick, could you just unmute board members should they want to have a comment?
Absolutely. I think everybody...
Charles, is it?
I'm good. Now I'm good.
Okay.
Jim is...
Martinez, nice to meet you.
Jim is still here.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Yes, welcome, welcome to the White Plains family. This board believes there's nothing better than the White Plains School District. We are all family. Our teaching professionals are just outstanding. Our administrators are outstanding. Everywhere you go, you see excellence, right? From Board of Ed, through every department, every colleague in White Plains, and we're family, so welcome to the family. You're muted. Is he unmuted, Joe?
I just said, again, thank you again, and I'm really thoroughly just excited and have tons of enthusiasm to get started, you know, as soon as I can get over there. And, you know, I'm just, again, looking forward to meeting all the different constituents. As I've said to you guys, I had spent some time in White Plains under a different role my first years in education, so I'm definitely excited to come back and really, you know, put some roots down. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move into our board committee reports. Do we have any committee meetings?
Actually, two quick ones. The SEL committee met, there was actually a meeting while I was on vacation, but we had, I was at the first meeting and just talking about, under Deb Bogart, you know, good old Deb, and everyone on the committee, it was a really, really impressive meeting, talking about a survey about the staff, the staff concerns focused on their own health but on the students, and about the goal that our kids' SEL needs could be met 80% within the classroom. So it's an exciting time. And then we had a district guidance advisor committee meeting under Ms. Hall and all the wonderful things that our guidance staff is doing. And we looked at the new state standards, and really, we're doing a lot already of what the state is asking us to do. So there's not so much retooling going on, just a couple of adding and tweaking points here and there, but just, again, a great meeting. Thank you to everybody.
Are there any other board committee reports? I don't, I don't have any.
I'll just mention, Joe already talked about the strategic planning, so that we, you know, we'll be presenting that in September, and it's a continuation, really, of the work we've been doing.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, before we adjourn, I just want to thank everyone who brought comments to us tonight. Everyone's comments are important, all feedback is welcome. These are not easy decisions. We don't know how this virus will behave, and many of us have comments that, and we all deserve to be heard. I want to thank you for that, especially for the comments brought here tonight. I thank you. It is clear that the health and safety of our colleagues is the utmost thing on all of our minds, and that is what's truly important. We thank you for all comments, whether, you know, in 100% agreement, 50% or not. We thank you because we know that everything was considered, and we will move forward in the best interest of every single colleague, no matter where they sit in our district, to make sure they are safe. We thank you, we thank you. And, Dr. Rick, unless you have any closing comments during the meeting?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Just a reminder to our community members, we do have another Q and A tomorrow. We will, this time, hopefully, get the team to be able to join and answer those questions that folks may have. We also have another voluntarily staffed meeting this week as well, so lots of continued conversations, President Eller and trustees, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. So whoever is not safely at home during this thunderstorm, get home and be dry, and thank you. And now, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Be safe.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.